Yeah. Okay. It is slightly after seven o'clock, so I'm going to go ahead and call this special meeting of the Albany City Council of November ninth, 2022, to order. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of La Shon. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. And in the spirit of the land acknowledgement, just want to relay that there's a mayor's conference meeting tonight that I'm obviously not at, but I noticed on the agenda that there's a presentation by the City of Oakland and representative of the Suweritie Land Trust about a cultural conservation easement in San Joaquin Miller Park, or Joaquin Miller Park, pardon me, that it's being given to the trust, as I understand it, by the City of Oakland. So I think there's some capacity and some institutional knowledge there that might be helpful to Albany as one option for how it might fill part of its resolution from last year, from '21. So I'll make sure to connect staff to that information. And with that, city clerk, if you'd go ahead and call the roll, please.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Here.
Councilmember Nason?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Here.
And Mayor Jordan.
Here. Thank you, city clerk. And so we go to the item of business for tonight, which is providing direction on an appointment process for filling a vacant city council seat. And I can go ahead and just jump in since I wrote the report, if that's all right, staff, unless you have something you want to say. Okay. So this is motivated by a charter amendment that was approved by the voters in, well, in 2016. It was amendment to Charter Section 5.02, and that amendment required that if there's a vacancy, well, that part of the charter requires that vacancies be filled by appointment. You know, some charters specify by special election, ours specifies by appointment, and that amendment required that the process that we follow be laid out in ordinance. And we found that we're a little flat-footed because subsequent to the voters approving that amendment, an ordinance was not developed and adopted. So we're here tonight to discuss what the process should be, what parts of that should be laid out in an ordinance so that staff can go ahead and draft that ordinance and we can get that adopted and then proceed. So I tried to lay out in the report that I generated various components of the process that I thought that the council would want to weigh in and weigh in on and choose from among various options for those that have options. And just to list out those here, slightly different configuration, there's the application. What should the application consist of? The application period, how long should that be? Should it, when should information from the application or the application as a whole be published? Whether the process should involve nomination or all the applicants should be considered? What should be involved in terms of the interaction between the council and the applicants/nominees? You know, how do they address the council? And then finally, how the balloting is to proceed? So my proposal is to go through those one at a time so that we have a structured way through this. But before we get to that, and I ask if that seems like a good plan for the council, are there any other components the council members think that should be added to that list for our deliberation tonight? Yes, Councilmember Nason.
Yeah, I guess I first have a question for Mala. Does the language of the charter preclude having a special election?
Let me double check. My recollection is that the language either in the charter or the ordinance actually doesn't allow for it, but just if you give me one moment, I can confirm.
Yeah, while she's looking at that information, does that seem like a reasonable approach to proceed through these one at a time and take some decisions? Okay, sounds good. Does the council have any questions about material in the report? I mean, obviously, we'll get into deliberating it. I don't know if there was any questions, clarifying questions that anybody had before we go to public comment, which I have to wonder if there's any public comment, but...
I have comments, no questions.
Okay. Okay.
I have comments as well. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So I think the city attorney is ready?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Section 5.02 of the charter specifically says, "A vacancy in any elective office other than the Board of Ed from whatever cause arising shall be filled by appointment by the council, and then such appointee to hold office until the next feasible general municipal election," which will be when the term ends.
And that was another part of what the amendments that were made in 2016. And I think the feasible word, if I recall, was courtesy of the council, but courtesy of Council, Councilmember McQuaid's suggestion, because there was a little bit of, I think it was 60 days prior to an election or something before, which was not feasible. I can't remember anyway. We've got it right, so thank you, Councilmember McQuaid. So with that, we'll go to public comment if there is. Oh, did that answer your question sufficiently, Councilmember Nason? Yeah, okay.
But I do have comments, but I'll wait till after public comment.
Okay, sure.
Go ahead, Margie.
Hi, this is Margie Marks. I just wanted to say I see this seven-page procedure, and I think, you know, normally it would be fine, but the voters have just spoken in Albany. And I don't know why, at this point, the council can't take the third person who would have, you know, the person that will come in third, I don't know if that's been determined for sure. I've heard that there's a lot of votes out there. I've heard all the votes have been counted. I don't know. But I think that the council should look at what the voters of Albany have said and that that should carry some weight here. And I realize that's not part of the procedure, and it probably won't be part of a next procedure, but I want you to look at that for here. And I just have to mention one other thing very quickly. Mr. Mayor, you used your talent and your brains and put together this seven-type-written thing about procedures in detail. Please use your talent and your brain and come up with a procedure for the community to deal with the issue of the black child that was afraid for her life in Albany. Okay, I know that's off the subject. Thank you, bye.
Thank you.
Go ahead, either David or Julie.
Yeah, thank you. Do, is this our only chance to comment after you all talk about it and you come up with something, and then we're not going to get to comment again? We have to comment in advance of any major changes that could be made to your doc, to the document by the mayor? I am concerned about that because I can comment on what you wrote, Mayor Jordan, but I can't really comment on what happens next. So, but I'll give you my comment now, and then I would love an answer to that question. I would like to see in the future, I know you're going to decide on a procedure now, but, and it sounds like this was decided by an amendment, I would like to see it changed to a special election so that the voters actually do get to decide because historically it seems to me that whoever's appointed ends up running for city council and winning because they've been on city council. So this really stacks the deck against people who don't get appointed. So I would like to see it be a special election. I also agree with Margie that the simplest thing to me at this point is the person who came in third, that we've got what the voters want, why not use that? I also wanted to know how the council will decide, like, is just like, oh, I like the way that person said that, or I know them and I know they'll be good, so I think I'll vote for them. I mean, what kind of parameters are there going to be? Do they have to explain what decision-making they use to get to decide on who they're going to vote for? And then I also wanted to say that I saw that you were recommending that their name and email be published because it would be available through public record, but most people aren't going to put in a request for public record, and I would suggest not posting their email address. I just think it's an invasion of privacy that isn't necessary, and I don't, I don't know that, I don't know if in regular elections, the email addresses are easily available through the voter booklet. I also hope that, I know you made mention of this in your document, but I hope that you will allow, if there is a forum, if that's what you end up deciding to do, that you will encourage in participation by the public and do as much notification as possible in all the different ways that can be done in the city, aren't necessarily done. Usually, stuff seems to be done through the website, but I would like to see a real effort to include the community and also to take into account people, to encourage people to apply who may not have, if you go with that route, to, who may not have thought of doing that. And this is an amazing opportunity, especially somebody who's not a white male or white person in general, but a person of color in the community who maybe wouldn't have an opportunity because no one would know who they were. So this is your chance as the city council to really show that you are committed to a diverse group of people. So that's it. I know I only have 10 seconds, but I would appreciate an answer to my question about whether this is our last chance to comment. Thank you.
Thank you, and I thank you both for taking the time to attend this special meeting and provide comment. Yeah, maybe to respond, to frame this, because it's an ordinance that we're required to follow, I think the intent is to come up with something that is durable across a greater variety of conditions, maybe than the conditions that are immediately in front of us. So that's my understanding of the charge that we have. So in that regard, I think we'll probably come back to revisit some of the points that were made around the exigencies of where we're at right now versus all the other situations and times in which vacancy might occur. As far as commenting, again, so we will not be adopting anything tonight, and we'll be coming back to council at a next special meeting. I think that's November 15th, is that what I recall correctly? So six days from now, which would be fast work for staff. Thanks, staff, for doing that. And so it'll be opportunities to comment on the, what is in draft at that time. And while obviously can be difficult to make adjustments, it would be possible to make adjustments at that time. Let's see. I think, yeah, I think many of the other comments relate to items that we're going to deliberate, so I'm, we'll let those get addressed as we proceed. Yes?
Can I make sort of an opening comment?
Yes, please do.
Opening and overarching.
Yeah.
I think it's important to think about this, and I think this is kind of what we did the last time, was specific to this, this place and time, as opposed to trying to solve for every possible scenario that comes along, because we can't. I mean, we, you know, somebody could resign, more than one person could have to leave because of some kind of emergency. So I think it's impossible to write an ordinance that covers everything. So I think we should really focus tonight and next time on this particular situation. And this situation is unique because we had an election yesterday, and that probably won't happen again, may or may not happen again. So I don't think we should get hung up on the idea that we're going to write an ordinance in perpetuity. And I think, I think we have to be very specific on this one. And I think that's why we didn't write an ordinance between 2014 and now, because we didn't want to sort of speculate.
Thank you. Well, that might change entirely what we're doing tonight, then. So maybe to step back, I mean, that suggests an option that I don't think I included in the report. I'm not sure if I'm reading into what you're saying accurately or not. So I guess I'll just ask, I mean, does that suggest that you have a preference for somehow taking into account, which is not proposed in any option that I wrote, that we take into account the results of the election that are currently still forthcoming, or?
No, no, but it's, it's just that we don't try to create an ordinance for all time.
Okay.
We create an ordinance for this situation.
Okay, okay. Yes, Vice Mayor.
I see the reasoning of that, but I would disagree to some extent of, you know, I don't think what we're trying to do is write an ordinance to deal with every outcome, every set of circumstances that could land us in this situation. But we're trying to set a policy that is, you know, to some extent flexible, but is there when a future council has to deal with this. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that, and I wouldn't characterize it quite as setting a policy for all time. I would say it's having something in place so we are more prepared for this happening. And the goal of that should be that it is flexible enough for that council that if there is a special situation, like that there was just an election, they can take that into account and make that a part of their deliberation, even if it's not specifically spelled out in this ordinance. And I think there are ways to do that and to address the idea of we've just had an election, the voters have, you know, made some things clear. I think that should absolutely be part of our deliberations and part of what we're thinking about in appointing someone and maybe, you know, should be a part of how we're deciding who we want to appoint. But I can easily imagine situations where that's, A, not going to be the case when we have someone to appoint, and we need a procedure in place for that happening, and also imagine a situation in which we could be in this situation again, but there could be someone who, you know, has come up third in an election, who no one on council wants to appoint, and many people in the city probably won't want to be there. Yeah, I can easily imagine an election in which there are two, really only two serious candidates that a lot of the city supports, and one candidate who has very little support, even if it's more than, you know, 10% or whatever bar we could put for it. So that's why I think, you know, there should be some flexibility in here, even if we acknowledge that we are in a special circumstance, and that should be part of our deliberation.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Nason.
Yeah, you know, we're at a point in time nationally when we're very concerned about democracy, and I think, I think we need to be concerned about democracy here at home. This is a highly unusual and very troubling situation. We have a vacancy, we have a council member who has departed less than halfway through their term. Two years is a long time for an appointee to sit in a seat that is supposed to be democratically elected, and that troubles me a lot. I, if we, if it's not possible to do a special election or an advisory election, I don't know if that's, if that might be a possibility to inform the council's decision, but I would very strongly prefer that we, that we try to have a democratically selected person. And I'd like to have, and would you mind putting up the excerpt from the Alameda County, the City of Alameda Charter that I sent you?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, this is an example, and it's not the only one. I'll touch on that as well. But if you look, if you, oops, it went away. Go away for everybody. Okay, there it is. If you look at Section 2-7A and B, what, what Alameda, the City of Alameda has done is to, if a vacancy under Section B, if a vacancy has occurred within six months of any election, then it would be filled in the manner provided in Section A. And what Section A provides is that the, essentially, the next candidate in line from the election that was held within that six-month period, it becomes the, becomes the, fills that vacancy so long as they achieved at least 10% of the total number of voters. And I agree with Councilmember Tiedemann's concern that 10% may be too low a threshold to assure that you don't get a situation that is seriously problematical. But I would favor using a term, using a provision of this kind in our ordinance, whether it's an ordinance to fit this particular situation or to fit a longer-term situation. And, you know, as I read the charter amendment, it does tell us to choose, you know, to adopt by ordinance. When that happens in a general law city, as I understand it, they have to arrange, it's required by state law that they arrange for a special election. So that, I would like us to carefully examine the possibilities for democratically filling the seat. And I should say, you know, that I say this as someone who is not, you know, who is not a supporter of the most likely person to be put into the council seat. That doesn't come into it. I'm just saying it should be a democratic situation. And even in the situation that we have, without going into too much detail, I think you could say, you know, we've got candidates, we've got a candidate who is overwhelmingly qualified, a longtime city council member and former mayor, and we have a council member who, in objective terms, if you were just looking at this as if you were going to hire a person, is brand new in town and has no experience at all. But the person who is brand new in town did win more votes so far in the counting than the person who has a lot of experience. So it would be troubling to me if we were to appoint a person based on their qualifications, which are different, a different set of qualifications than voters may choose in their exercise of their right to vote. I'd also like to touch on the fact that, as we all know, that we have been threatened with litigation by the Southwest Voter Education Registration, Southwest Voter Registration and Education Project, which is primarily concerned with Latino representation. And I think that, I suspect they would be deeply concerned about any decision that we made that involved passing over a Latino candidate, and I think that should be kept in mind as well.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
A couple thoughts from those comments. First, I want us to be careful in designing this ordinance, how much we talk about the qualifications or, you know, anything about prospective candidates, as I think by any measure of this process, that's going to come later. Does some of that have a place of thinking about, you know, who we could appoint to some extent, but we, there's a danger of going too far down a rabbit hole that's going to be a part of our later process, especially depending on what choices we make based on what's in this report. And I don't want us to get bogged down in that. And as I said earlier, a lot of this, I think, needs to be applicable to other situations in designing it around what's happened here is not what we should be doing. I also just wanted to say on the idea of a special election or doing this democratically, really I'm against any form of special election for the same reason that I think Councilmember Nason would be in support of it, of a special election has a danger of being in many ways less democratic. I think it's pretty common knowledge at this point that special elections, recalls, even midterms have much less turnout than other elections do. It's hard to get people to vote. You can look at the totals we have now, and you can see that pretty easily of just, I know all the votes haven't come in, but less people voted in Albany for city council in this election in a very, by all accounts, a very important midterm that people turned out for than voted in the general election that the mayor and I were elected in. And that means that a smaller population of people within Albany will be choosing the city council and school board. Now, I'm not saying we should get rid of midterm elections, but I think it's pretty clear that the more often you have elections that are not the big ones, that are irregular or that are on off-years, excuse me, the less people are going to vote, and the harder it's going to be to get them to turn out to vote. In fact, I believe just in this election, San Francisco passed a measure to consolidate their elections to not happen in odd years, as they sometimes do, because there is this huge danger of people just don't turn out, and it means that if you're electing someone via that special election, they are chosen by a population that doesn't really represent the city you're in. Now, I get that the alternative to this is, this is a council appointing someone, which is less than ideal for the idea of having the people choose the representatives. I agree that it's less than ideal, but any situation we're in, given that we have a vacancy, is less than ideal. So we're trying to choose between not great alternatives, and unfortunately, and sort of contrary to the common sense answer, having an election or trying to have an election of some sort can mean that we are in fact not having it be more democratic. And so I think in some readings, having a council that has been elected by the people try and decide on someone to serve can be more democratic than having a special election because those people represent a, you know, mandate of people. I see the city attorney waving at me. Am I getting off topic?
No, you are completely on topic. I just know there's a lot of discussion about having an advisory special election, and I just wanted to clarify that the charter specifically says if the vacancy is not filled within 60 days, the mayor will then, shall appoint.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to say this is somewhat academic because we would have to amend the charter.
Correct.
And that's obviously not going to happen, so I think this is something that the next council could agendize if they want to amend the charter to allow special elections. the charter to allow special elections. But for tonight, in order to make progress, the progress we need to make, I would suggest we set that part of the conversation aside.
Apologies for being over academic on the subject of elections. Not at all really surprising.
Well, could we have a discussion of the possibility of using, adopting an ordinance of the type that I showed from the City of Alameda?
Well, I think first, Councilmember McQuaid has a comment, and certainly we can discuss that.
I just wanted to agree with Vice Mayor Tiedemann and to remind people that the city used to hold elections in April for council and, and school board, and at that time, city attorney and police chief and who knows what all. They changed it to coincide with the November election, just to bring up the pop, the voting population. So you're absolutely right in what you're saying.
Thank you.
I, I agree with that as well.
So, so yeah, maybe Spence suggests to discuss the, this, I'll say, City of Alameda-style approach, given that we're in this, in this window of an election just having occurred. It seems like we need to deliberate where we're at on that before we go discuss anything more about, about process. So we've heard Councilmember Nason's preference. I don't know if the other Vice Mayor or Councilmember McQuaid.
You know, I would, I would almost rather include that in the discussion, but go through the processes. You've outlined it.
Okay.
And just, that's just another alternative to what's on the, on the table, rather than pulling that out and discussing that and then going on. But that's just my thought.
I guess my thought on discussing this option is because I think this option basically replaces everything else.
Right, and that's-
It's not like a step, it's like a complete alternative.
And that's kind of why I don't want to do it that way, because I kind of want to flesh out all of these and that.
Okay. Yes.
I, as I'm reading this, I don't think it has to devalidate all the other options, as the wording here is if a vacancy happens within six months of any election. So I think if we do decide to do that, which I'm open to discussing, then I would still want us to make a decision on all the other parts of this and have an ordinance and set down a process. It's just we would add in a section that says, if this happens within, you know, X period of time near an election, then you follow this other process. So I think even if we go with that route, I don't think it should replace everything else.
Okay, and that seems reasonable. And I, I can say, as mayor, having to develop the report and respond to creating an ordinance, I would like to save any future mayor from, and council from having to do something on urgency if possible. Might not be possible, given their circumstances, but.
Certainly save them having a lot of special meetings, which-
Yeah.
Is probably good.
So with that, I'm hearing some consensus to go ahead and go through the items as laid out, and then we'll also look at whether this, this approach that Councilmember Nason has brought us is, will be in there as well. Okay, so to start out, the first item I had was the application, the form of the application. And we have the form that was used in 2014. And as I reviewed in the report, different applicants took different approaches in terms of how mu, how much information they provided in response to that. There was about 20 times difference in terms of the length of information that was provided from one application to another. And the applicant that was appointed was the one that provided the least information in terms of number of pages. Only one way to characterize it, obviously, it's not to say that the quality of the information was much less than the others or more. But for myself, it just called into question, what is the value of, how elaborate an application has value? Did that application have value in, in everything that it requested? Was that too much? Was that too little? And, and so the, the alternative that I thought of and put in there was, and, and in general, I tried to put in alternatives that were guided by what candidates go through, try to make it look as much like that vetting process with all the, the tradition, traditional knowledge it has in it, you know, which is the result of the decisions of millions of minds in democracy through time, why candidates have to go through what they go through. So following that, you know, one of the, the main pieces that's required is a statement of qualifications by the candidate that's 200 words long. Now, we could change the length, but my thought was that could be featured more centrally as, as an alternative. So those are just two, two options. Obviously, there's an infinite number of options. So curious what people's, councilmembers' thoughts are.
Well, I'll, I'll start. And in full disclosure, I was a 37-page person.
I didn't, I didn't call anybody out, so.
No, I, I appreciate that, but I think it's, it's foreseen, that, that does color my perspective.
Uh huh.
And I'm not usually the wordy one. You know, I, I think of the application, I think it's a process sort of as, as a mini campaign, a very constrained campaign. And I think of the application as your brochure and normally what you would mail or drop or whatever. So I think the more, the more information that can be in there, both for the public, who could read it online, and for the council making the decision, I think, I think it's useful. It's obviously not the be-all, end-all, but, but I don't think you should say, no, you can't, you can only have this 200 words or 300 words or whatever. I don't think that gives a very full picture. And if, to be democratic, this is open to the entire community to apply, there may be people that we don't know very well, and we need a fuller picture of them. So I, with that in mind, I think it should be up to the candidate to decide what they want to do. And I think, the other thing is, I think, like, letters of recommendation are kind of endorsements. And it, and it gives you a sense of who this person is and who supports them and what their base is. So I think, I think it's a better overall picture of the candidate.
Thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, I get that reasoning. I think I would be in favor of having the statement plus some other stuff, and with an opening for attaching other documents that the candidate feels shows who they are. So not having, you know, the full list of what there was in the 2014 process, of you have to have all these things, but maybe saying you have to have, you know, a statement that is 200 words or somewhere around there, as I think that is a useful metric of, you know, what are the top build things you want to get in here and tell us about, and just talk about, you know, who you are. Some sort of resume, which I think encompasses a lot of the things that are in this bullet pointed list in option one, and then letters of recommendation, and then just having an option of, you know, you can attach up to three other documents of some sort, with maybe some sort of caveat that all of those documents can't be 1,000 pages and just be throwing everything in the kitchen sink at us, because this is a short process and, you know, it needs to be something the public and we can read in a pretty short timeframe. And there is a value to being able to present yourself with some brevity. But I can, I can see that being the right way to do it and getting it, Councilmember McQuaid's idea of letting them, you know, show us who they are.
Thank you. Councilmember Nason.
A question for the mayor, was your thought that they would be, that the candidates would be limited from sending in more? I, I very much like the idea of kind of following the template of what a candidate does. And, and of course, I have to say, I'm the person who put in the two-pager. And I was appointed, you know, when it was a five month, the five months, I think I, I was appointed for. But I think that it's, it's helpful to the candidate, to the council, to have a relatively small batch of material that is framed in the same way as is done by a candidate for election. But if people want to, you know, if they want to send up a, set up a website and send us a link, that, you know, they can do whatever they, they want to do. They can, I, that, that's the way that I would want to approach it. So it would be doing what the mayor is suggesting, but allowing people to, anybody, you know, public comment, anybody who wants to can send in a letter saying, please appoint so-and-so. I, I don't see those, I don't see these methods. I don't see that this is irreconcilable, what Councilmember McQuaid is saying. It doesn't seem to me to be at odds with what the mayor is saying.
Yeah, and to be clear, part of what I was doing in the report was, was, you know, obviously, I'm presenting alternatives to what was done in 2014. And so the implication from that can be that, that those are the alternatives I favor. And that's true in some cases. In other cases, I'm just trying to provide alternatives and, in some senses, maybe, you know, pushed to the extreme a little bit to help facilitate us to think more deeply about the matter. So I think what I did have in there was, yeah, it would only be a candidate's statement, but that's not, I don't think that's realistic. Again, that was to try to foster our, our thinking. So I, I am, I do think there needs to be a candidate's statement. What else is in there? I'm okay, pretty much, with however that goes. I think what the vice mayor's come up with is probably a reasonable hybrid approach, it seems like.
Could I suggest the candidate's statement be longer than 200 words? I think, I think the problem with 200 words, for me anyway, in writing them, it's, it's so constrained that I felt like, like it was grammatically incorrect, because I was trying to, you know, scrunch it all in. And I, I didn't feel it was my best writing at all. And I, you sort of feel bad that, wow, do people think this is how I write? So I, or is this how I think? So I would, maybe 300 words or 250 or, you know, not 1,000, but-
Yeah.
So you could make complete sentences.
Yeah, I mean, what's, what's one page, like 500 words?
I, I have 250 in mind, but I don't, well, it turns on my own space. But in any case, 300 sounds good to me.
300 could work.
300.
I think what I wrote for college, when I had to write a one-page paper introducing myself, which seems like kind of the right balance to try and find.
I think that's fine. Yeah.
I think 300's good.
Okay.
And with the, with the idea, though, that we can have other, other things.
Yeah, yeah. So you, you, maybe to, to get specific, you had kind of other things in mind looking at the prior application?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say, I would say resume, because that condenses a lot of the things that were in the 2014 application into one of the, you know, the community activities, the advisory body service.
Yeah.
You know, imagining it's not going to be everyone's stock resume, I'm imagining they're going to suit it to their city experience. But that also frees up their words in their statement to not have to go over that sort of thing. And then maybe a, a letters of rec attachment, and then an option to attach two, three other things, maybe? If that sounds right to other people.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Yeah, I'm not sure what else you would need to attach.
Yeah.
You know, I think-
I'm sure people will come up with something.
I'm sure. So that's, that's fine, just to leave it at two other things or whatever.
On the, the resume part, I think in order to invite breadth of applicants, it would be useful to, you know, say, please attach your, your resume, focusing on your civic activities and pure examples of things that could be included, because it might not be obvious to people who could be great, great to fill the role, you know, what, what it is that they should be putting there. Okay, I think we've reached a consensus point on that, unless I see somebody wanting to comment otherwise. In the, in this regard, I mean, there, another part of what's going on here is what should be in the ordinance and what shouldn't be in the ordinance. My suggestion would be, this should not be in the ordinance, this should be something that, that each council decides, but that's just my, my current thought, I don't know. But then it would maybe take a special meeting, but then again, it might not, because if it's, doesn't have to be done by ordinance, then there's less overhead to figuring it out.
Could it say something like, in the ordinance, something like, as prescribed by the council at, at the time, or some, something-
Yeah, yeah.
Gives council the flexibility to do this, but there's something in there that says you're going to do this.
You gotta do it.
It's not just like a random, random thing.
Yeah. Council will, council will define the application as step one.
Right, you might want to-
Yeah, okay.
You might want to address public comment.
Oh, okay. Hi there, welcome.
Hi, thank you, thank you. I guess I got three minutes here. So you, you came up with some great ideas, and it resonates with me very well. You know, so 300 to 500 words, it'd be nice for you to all agree, three, I really appreciate the 300 words. It was difficult, just 200 words. I think, I think I hit 200 words exactly, if I'm not mistaken, maybe 199 or 201. It's pretty right on the dot, but it's, it's not enough words to really explain yourself on who you are, right? So, couple other clarifications. You mentioned the resume. How many pages would the resume be? Would it just be one page? So maybe you could clarify on some sort of agreement on how many pages long the resume could be. And also, I really like the idea of letter of recommendations. And I was just wondering, how many letters of recommendations? Because someone could put 50, right? So we need to come up with a number of maximum letters of recommendations. And also, the idea of some other attachments, could maybe be a photo of yourself. That could be, you said some of my house, some ideas, there's an idea just throwing out there. You know, a photo of yourself, and maybe a, a spot on, you know, kind of what community service you do for the community, or what clubs you're in, or something like that. Because I noticed on, when you have your city council, it kind of describes what you, what you do, maybe past commissions or committees you've been on, so there could be a spot for that. Maybe that could be on the resume, I'm not really sure. But yeah, so just a few clarifications on how many words, I really appreciate that, you're improving that, that really means a lot. And also, I just want to re, re, say what I said, just how many pages long is a resume? One page, two pages, three pages? Also, how many letters of recommendations? One to 10? Also, being able to submit a photo of yourself? And also, I really think it would behoove the city to have a forum, because this year there was no forum given by the city. There was not a chance for any city council member to come here and sit up at the table and have the public come and ask questions. It was basically put on by side organizations. So I remember years in the past when, I think Amber ran for city council, I remember there was a forum up here, and all the candidates were sitting up there and the public was here asking questions. So I would really hope in the future that, in future elections, that there's actually a city-run forum. That'd be great for the public. And that's about it, yeah, maybe just a spot for some photos, or a, a photo of yourself.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Before we go further-
Sure.
Can we address public comment? Because I think, I think we have two things happening. We had members of public ask about, will there be an opportunity? Mr. Barrett Peguelo came in late and didn't hear that, and has been given the opportunity to speak on this one item, but I just want to make sure that we're being fair to everybody. And, and no is an okay answer, but we need to-
Yeah, yeah, no, I-
Have the same thing going forward.
I agree. I mean, I think it's, I mean, it's important to get through this, also important to be expansive on it.
Right.
So yeah, I'm not sure what-
Yeah, I don't care what we do, but we have to do the same thing.
Yeah, I was, I was, yeah. I was going to direct that, that the commenter really comment on the entirety, and I think he, he did, in terms of points, because I don't want to take comment on every, each of the seven items. So.
I had this thought earlier when the question was asked of, we don't have a ton of attendees, we can always lower the time if we want to, but we can reopen public comment at semi-regular, I'm hoping that this meeting won't go long enough that we have to do it more than maybe once or twice more.
Yeah, okay.
But that could be a way to-
Okay.
Do so.
Yeah, so why don't I open it up again? We have six items. I can open it up again after the third one and after the sixth one, and, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. So- So the.
Might I suggest when we do that, maybe do not three minutes and one, one and a half?
Yeah, that's good, good, good suggestion. Somebody's getting ready to be mayor, I like it. I'm looking forward to it. Yeah, so, so some suggestions were raised in terms of the application, you know, should there be guidance on the resume length? I don't know.
Two pages max?
Okay, two pages, that sounds reasonable. Number of letters of reference?
Three.
I'm really open, I mean, we, it, like someone said, it's like, we get letters all the time.
Yeah.
It just goes into the file.
No max is fine.
Yeah, that's how I'm inclined, if, again, trying to follow somewhat what somebody goes through, if they're going to be a candidate, there's no end of the endorsements they can get, so. All right? Unless there's further comment on the application, we can move on to the application period. I think it was 10 days, might have been 10 working days in 2014, which included a weekend, and I was, the option I put forward was two weeks, you know, a full two calendar weeks. I don't know that it's that high a point that needs a lot of deliberation, but people have thoughts on that? I mean, there should be, that, I think that should be in the ordinance, I think. Yes, Councilmember Nathan?
I think 10 days is plenty.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
And calendar days, 10 workdays?
Calendar days.
Huh.
With, it extended till Monday if the 10th day falls on the weekend.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know, for somebody who's, you know, working full-time, I just, it seems like a lot to get together, I mean, if you're going to get together letters of reference from a bunch of people, I don't know.
I would agree with that, of 10 days is quick, and obviously, it needs to be somewhat quick, but if we can say two weeks, that's not, you know, materially too different while allowing people a bit more time, and hopefully, you know, definitely, you know, a full weekend, at least one, to get through this.
Yeah, well, I think two weeks, you know, my thought on two weeks was it provides two weekends.
Your math is better than mine, yes.
For a person can, that's amusing, because I often blow the, set up the problem, then blow the basic operation, so. The, yeah, so my thought was, you know, somebody who's working full-time, has, you know, other obligations, as many people do, you know, they'd have one weekend to kind of organize their game plan, and then the second weekend to, you know, really, really execute, get it together, get all the letters of reference, so that was kind of my, my thought.
I think that's fine.
Okay. Are you, okay, enough with that? Councilmember Nathan, okay, all right. Application publishing is the next item, and so, I think, I can't remember quite how I phrased it in the report, I realize, if it says publish the application as soon as it comes in, well, yeah, that's not appropriate option, that's too extreme. So I went back and thought about, and looked at, what do candidates do? And their name, and an email address is published, if I recall correctly, on the city clerk's site, is that correct?
Well, the email is based on the form that you guys fill out for information about candidates, and what candidates authorize to disclose on the website, with the caveat that, if you remember, that I've told all the candidate that it, the information is still subject to disclosure.
Right.
Regardless whether it's authorized on the website or not.
So if I understand correctly, because it's been a little while since I personally went through this, the candidate submits the information, contact information, and they have the option to say, I don't want this put on the website, knowing that if somebody comes to City Hall, they, they can get it anyway.
Correct.
Okay.
That's how I've done it, with the nomination packet.
Okay, so I would say, follow that.
Well, I.
Yeah.
I, I do think that, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't remember which of the public made the comment, but I had written it down also, usually when you have a election campaign, you have an, an email address for the campaign.
Mm-hmm.
This doesn't really require that, and so you'd be giving your personal email, and I, I realize you can get it through public records, but I have a little bit of angst about asking people to just randomly put their personal email up, so I would say just the name.
Okay.
And not put up a personal email. Would that work?
No.
No, she's saying, up to us.
Was that no thoughts, not no?
Whatever you guys decide.
Okay, but it's not a no, okay. Yeah, I would suggest it's just the person's name.
Okay.
So we're not giving out, you know, just, I think that's better.
Well, I would think that, I guess I would like to provide them the option of having some contact information listed, because it's an opportunity for people to reach out to them and say, hey, I want to, you know, learn more about you, and maybe I'll support you.
Yeah.
So I, I wouldn't want to preclude it, so I, that's why I say, I think, let's, we could just follow what, what the candidates, the options the candidates have, and say, you have the option of, of having an email address listed, or not, up to you.
I'd, I'd agree with that, especially, you know, I imagine, even though it might be used very briefly, people could just make an email for this.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's pretty easy, I myself have far too many emails. They're not hard to make if you have one.
Yeah, that reminds me of one that was just made, that probably needs to have something happen to it.
Not yet.
Okay. I think we've reached agreement on that, so I would suggest that go in the ordinance as well, because I think, I think it's, I think knowing who is applying, when they're applying, I mean, it's important information, and again, however you judge that information, that's how we do it for candidates in an election, so, again, millions of minds have decided there's benefit to doing it that way. We've actually made pretty rapid progress through two and three.
Well, it's, before we move on from three.
Okay.
I think also in the ordinance should be the withdrawal ability, because I think that is an important thing to have.
Okay, so this is ability to withdraw application?
Yeah, as described here, just by contacting the city clerk.
Okay.
As, you know, that does affect who else is going to apply, it affects what people, you know, who people think is in the pool when they are commenting to the city council that's considering this, it's just more beneficial for understanding of public information.
So are, are you suggesting then there'd be some kind of a, a note if they had their name published, they were running, and then they withdrew, that it would be noted on? That's what, that's what I'm thinking, too, so.
Yeah, and something in the ordinance saying they can withdraw after submitting their application by contacting the city clerk.
Right, but then I think there should be something that notes on the website that they have withdrawn.
Yes.
And not just, not there.
Disappear.
Yeah.
Yeah, something noting this person has withdrawn, yes, exactly.
Just thinking on the fly, it seems like there should be a time limit, though, on when they can withdraw, because otherwise, you get in a situation where, I mean, the, so again, the million minds, you know, it was a ploy that an incumbent would potentially file, their protege would file, and then they would withdraw on the last day, and their protege would be the only candidate. So I don't want to set up a gaming situation where, you know, people can apply to try to block other people, and then withdraw late, and so I wouldn't want to allow people with, withdraw, be allowed to withdraw up until the night that council was going to be considering who to appoint. Yes, I see the city clerk has thoughts, please, help.
Well, I was just going to suggest, like, for nomination packet, the candidate's statement is allowed to be withdrawn day, or by 5 o'clock of the next business day of the close of nomination.
Right.
So perhaps the application period, either the day of the application period, or the day after.
Day after, yeah.
I, yeah, I don't know if there's a way to address your worry in this one, because any date we choose is going to be at or near the end of the application period, anyway.
Right.
If someone does that, it will sort of be impossible to make them not, unless we set.
Right.
You can't withdraw, make that before the end of the application date, which seems kind of wonky.
I mean, functionally, I mean, realizing it's just, it's kind of unavoidable, because somebody can, the night of the council meeting, and somebody can say, I don't want to serve, and it's not like council's going to appoint them. So, yeah, you're right, I don't think there's any way to, to really avoid it, but I mean, a signal could be sent by setting a notional time. So the council has, by the charter, 60 days to appoint, before it goes to the mayor, and so if you figure, somebody resigns, you know, it could be a week or two before the council figures out what they want to do with the application, opens the application period in another two weeks, so you're, you're up to a month, 30 days there, so how far beyond those 30 days would you want to have a notional deadline for when people could withdraw? I mean, I would, I would say two days, maybe? Maybe the Monday, you know, Monday after the following weekend? I don't know. Maybe it's something we need to think about, and actually decide at the next meeting, we can have a placeholder.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to, this is getting so specific that I need language to look at, to figure it out, so maybe we address this one, or do it in the ordinance?
Okay, so conceptually, there'll be, there will be a withdrawal period that goes beyond the application period, what that is, we'll think about.
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
And.
Yes.
We want to talk about, and maybe sort of implied that, once the application period closes, then the applications go online, on to the website.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for making that overt, because, again, that would, that would follow the, the process the candidates go through.
So, I like this kind of casual thing here. It, it just occurred to me that letters of recommendation could conceivably come in until 5 o'clock the day of the council meeting, because they would come in as letters.
Right, they wouldn't be attached to the application, but.
Right, but they would.
Anybody can send anything to the council, so.
I just kind of had to say that, okay.
Yeah, sure. Again, I think saying a little more is better in this situation, so people have the opportunity to.
Yeah, and, well, also, you know, I think a lot of people would probably make the effort to read people's application materials, I don't think everyone who comes to our meetings makes the effort to read everything that's been put in the public record as comment, even if people sent it in as that.
Yeah, so there is advantage to including in the application. So I'm thinking of going one more step here, because I think the last two items that are, could potentially take more time, and we kind of made faster progress through these, given their nature, so I'm thinking of taking one more item, and then going back to public comment?
Okay.
Okay, okay, so the next item is nomination, which is simply, now, should the council hear from all the applicants, in whatever form is decided in the next step? Should the council ballot on all the applicants? Or should there be a step where council members nominate? So in the 2014 process, there was a nomination step. Now, there were three applicants, and there were four council members, and each council member can nominate one applicant, and so all the applicants ended up being nominated, they didn't have to all be nominated, I mean, it could have been that only two of them were nominated. So that's sort of the end members, and, and when I was first thinking about it, seeing, well, you know, there could be 15 applicants, but then, that was before I went back on the 2014, I was like, yeah, we have trouble, we, we don't really get 15 people wanting to be candidates, we probably won't get 15 people wanting to, to apply, but you never know, so I'm trying to create a durable process, that was, that was my thought.
I, if we're having each council person nominate one, I would say that that nomination should occur after the nominees address the council, as, also, that would just give the council more time to vet them, and then decide who they're going to nominate. If we wanted to have a nomination before they address the council, then, in the interest of having it be more open, we, I think, we would have more than one nomination, and maybe there would be a separate nomination period after that, of you nominate two to be in the forum, and then you nominate one to vote on in the first ballot, possibly. I think, do want to design something durable, there's, there is maybe a situation out there that we have 15 or more people apply, I don't think we live in that universe as much as I would love us to, so I don't think we're going to hit that problem. If that is happening in 20 years, the future council can shake their fist at me for suggesting this, but I think we would be okay if we did the nomination after the, addressing the council.
Okay.
I like it after.
Okay.
But I think here's where it gets, are we talking about one seat, or two seats, or it could be three seats? You know, yeah, I think we should sort of narrow our focus a little bit, but I do think that we should hear the candidates before we decide who we like.
Okay.
We being the generic council, not us.
Yeah. Councilmember Nathan, I don't know if you have thoughts on this part? Okay. Um, yeah, the thing behind that, the one, two seat that I put in there was, was the number of nominations would equal the number of seats, because it could be a situation where two seats are vacant, if there's three seats vacant, there's a whole different process, as I recall, so we don't need to contemplate that in this, this ordinance, I can't remember what the process is, but I think, maybe, may, if you have.
We have to go to a special election.
Okay, okay, so this is really all about if there's one vacancy or two simultaneous vacancies, so my thought was the nominations would match, nominations that each member would have available would match the number of seats to be filled. Hearing from all applicants, so this starts to have a nexus with item five, the suggestion I have in mind is that each application would have time to make a statement to the council, and then the council would nominate, and then, after that, there would be, well, and we can decide on this, but I don't think you can ha, I don't think you can commit to having a forum with an unlimited number of people. So I think, I think it's reasonable to commit to having each candidate address, or each applicant, address the council as an unlimited number, because, yeah, 15, okay, so you have 45 minutes of statements, or whatever, but, but in a forum, you know, you want to afford more time to each, each participant. So that might be a way to handle it, is all the applicants address the council, and then there's a nomination, and then we decide, you know, whether, and then there's a forum, or there isn't a forum, you know, that's to be decided after the next public comment.
Well, maybe we could just stop here.
Okay.
And stop it, I mean, you're kind of leech, leechy into the.
Yeah.
The other one, and just, I think we've agreed that we want to hear from the applicants.
Okay.
And then let's.
Okay, stop.
Stop.
Stop, okay, just stop.
And seemingly that each council person will have the number of nominees as there are seats open?
Well, I think she's saying, stop before we decide that.
Before we decide that? Although we're just stopping before we decide when the form comes in.
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's fine, you can nominate the number of seats.
Okay, 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 so with that, we will go back to public comment, and this is for everything up through the nomination, all those, all those steps, so, application, application period, information publishing, and addressing the council in the nomination.
Okay, so.
Actually, could, could you provide two minutes, if you would, Anne? Sorry about that, thanks.
Okay, so, regarding the application, it seems like, you know, I, I agree with everything you're saying so far, what's the 60-day limit? Wait, hold on a second here. Let me just say what I want to say, instead of just trying to go over everything.
Yes.
So, I don't know if we have moved to the forum yet?
We have not, yeah, so there will be an opportunity to comment on that.
So I, I, I think I agree with everything so far, this, this discussion's moving very well, it's, it's all, it's all very fair. If, if there's more than three or four, or more than the council gets to nominate, you know, you were speaking of 15 people hypothetically, right? I mean, that's a lot, but if it, if it comes to that, I know you don't want to get into that too far, but. if it, if it comes to that, I know you don't want to get into that too far, but there should be kind of more of an open process. It's just, it's tough. This whole situation is really difficult, because the people, the citizens are supposed to be able to get to elect city council. And in this situation, it's kind of like city council is getting to elect city council members. And so the public process is kind of taken out of this whole situation. I mean, it would be nice if the public were to get to vote somehow. I don't know, it's just, it's a really tough call. I mean, you're going to do what you got to do. I just think that maybe the public should get to have a way to vote.
Thank you. And yes, thank you, City Clerk.
Go ahead, Julie.
Welcome.
Thank you. So my comments, just to kind of go quickly over the stuff you've talked about. The email, I, it sounded like you were going to give people the option of giving their email or not giving their email. And I, if that's what the choice was, I think that's a really good idea. So people can opt out of having their email, despite that they could create some email. I'm concerned about the resumes and the letters of recommendation. Again, I kind of go back to my original question is like, what are, what, what are you using as the way? What is your rubric when you decide? Because if it's, if somebody's got a lot of letters of recommendation, and they have a really great, fantastic, impressive resume, they aren't necessarily going to be the person that should be on the council. It's, there's like a feeling, there's like a sub, subtext to everything you're talking about. Like there's the right people and the wrong people. That's what it feels like to me. And I, and there have been some sort of sideways comments from a couple of people talking about how there's some people you absolutely don't want on the council. I can, and that, that kind of remark makes me wonder just how fair and it will be. And then also, Councilmember Nathan made very clear that there was somebody that she wouldn't support. I mean, doesn't support, didn't support, but would have to live with the fact that, if that person were on the council. So there's kind of a, it's just too, it's too subjective. And, and I actually agree with Jeremiah. I think that the, the people should have some way of, I don't understand why you have to do this whole nomination thing. Why not just, you're not going to get a ton of people. Why not just let there be a forum and let the public come and ask people? And then express their opinion about it. And rather than it just being up to the group of people that you, you, you who already have a lot of preconceived ideas, I think, just based on your comments. So that's my kind of support, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back. Is there somebody else, or, oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, on the last commenter, I, I don't, I don't know if it's possible to construct a rubric or have a set of qualifications. I mean, each council member who's elected has their own idea of what they'd be looking for. So I think it's just in the nature of the difficulty of the situation. Yes?
Yeah, I, I would just agree with that of saying there's no way to make this process perfect. And it's, if, if there is a situation in which the council is appointing someone, it's reliant on that council's judgment at some time. That there's just no way to avoid that being the case. That's what we're elected to do, is use our judgment and also try and reflect the will of the people, which is much the same as what people are doing when they vote of, they're using their judgment about who it is. And many times, we've seen people don't vote for the most qualified person. So I don't think by saying, we'd like a, you know, resume of, you know, stuff you've done that might be similar to this, or just whatever you want to tell us you've done, and some letters of recommendation, I don't think we're saying the person with the most letters of recommendation or the most time on city committees is the person who we're going to appoint. I, I get how it can sound like that, especially as, you know, some of the language here is unavoidably like a job application. But I, I don't think that's what we're suggesting. We're saying we, we want that information to help us make the decision, but we are going to take account of, who do we think is the right person? Not just going by who's the most on paper qualified? Or, you know, who wrote the best statement or anything like that? So I, I, I don't think we're, we're trying to design a system that allows us to make that decision with the most information possible, not based on these metrics of qualification that is kind of arbitrary.
Thank you, yes, Councilmember Nathan.
Yeah, I just wanted to interject that I, I continue to disagree. And I, I, I did disagree with one comment that the vice mayor made, that we were elected to make this decision. I don't think we were. I think this is intended to be an elected body where all the members are elected by the voters. And that we should, we should strive to get, to be as close to that model as we can be. I'm a little bit shocked that our charter is so undemocratic. And I think, I think maybe we need to re, to revisit that. I think that for the city council to appoint a person to serve more than half of a term, it's not possible under general law, obviously. And it's not possible under any other charter that I have looked at. I don't think, I'd have to double check that. But I've been looking at charters, and I think this is, this is an extraordinary thing that we are undertaking to do. I'd like to have a chat about that Alameda, City of Alameda provision, and whether that, something along those lines could be utilized to, to assure that we have a council member who has passed muster with the voters.
Yes. Just to clarify, I didn't mean to say that we were elected to make this decision and to say that we are elected to use our judgment to the best of our abilities on everything that comes before the council. Unfortunately, that will sometimes include decisions like this about who we might appoint. And I have lots of other thoughts, but I think that would lead us down a path of getting too academic again about the nature of democracy. So I'm happy to discuss the City of Alameda style part, but I think we should finish discussing the steps here and then go back to that once we have defined, here's how we can do it, but here's another way that we can put in there.
I don't have anything to add right now.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that the information that, that we have asked for in the application is similar to what a candidate would put forward if they were going to be a credible candidate. And that doesn't mean that people just mechanically look at, okay, well, they have this many years of service, and they, you know, have these many accomplishments, and they're the one for me. I mean, definitely, that is not what happens. There's a lot of judgment about interpersonal quality and all the other nuances that we have as social creatures. So again, just trying to follow the model of what people go through in becoming candidates and the kind of information they put out. But that obviously is no more controlling on the council than it is on voters. So to go to the next item, which would be, I think, at this point, since the applicants have addressed the council, and so whether or not to include a, include a forum or have a forum. In 2014, there was not, you know, so that, that was an option that's in the report, it's not. Yes?
I, I would say, to me, it's obvious we should include a forum. The only question to me is whether we do that before or after a nomination has occurred. And I'm, I'm sensitive to the idea of we, it's hard to commit to having a forum with unlimited people. But I think maybe that might be the thing to do of, I don't think we're going to get unlimited people. And, you know, I think if, you know, if 15 people ran for council, it would be a hell of a thing to do. But the groups that hold forums in Albany would figure out a way to hold that forum. It might look different, or it might not be a forum where everyone's present at one time or something like that. But they'd figure it out. So if we can make it flexible, so that maybe the council doesn't have everyone in one night, maybe, or leave that option open. But I don't think we need to limit who's in the forum, and we can have the nomination after that.
I kind of don't like the idea of a forum. I think, I would rather hear the candidate talk about what, what they think their priorities are, what they think the issues in the city are. When you have a forum, it, it, it tends to be somebody else's view of what's important. And I would rather hear what the candidate thinks is important. I think, and I think forums can be very biased. And I guess the other question is, who would run the forum? I don't think we would necessarily want to do that. Do we bring in the League of Women Voters, which is, you know, obviously an impartial group? So I, I have concerns about a forum. We're willing to hear more, though.
Yes, Councilwoman Nathan.
I, I agree with Councilmember McQuaid. The federal government does not put on candidate forums, and the state government does not put on candidate forums. I don't think it's particularly proper for a government agency to put on a public, a candidate forum, because it is inherently biased. It's inherently, someone has to make decisions about what's important. And, and so it's, it's properly done by someone from the outside. And different forum organizers might have very different ideas. I mean, in, in a larger city, you go over to Richmond, they've had forums for, the business community has had a forum, and different homeowners associations have forums. There's lots of different forums. We'd be probably very fortunate if the League of Women Voters or the Albany Democratic Party, or whomever it might be, would put on a forum. And I think we should individually encourage people to do that. But I don't think it's proper for the city to do.
Yes, maybe to bring, bring more texture or detail to the thought, we can't commit to having a forum as a part of the process if, if the city is not going to do it. I mean, we can't commit an outside group, obviously, to, to hold a forum. My thought was that the, the council would conduct the forum, and each council member would ask one or two questions. And my interest in that was because, you know, as a politician, there's the proaction and reaction. And knowing how people react is pretty important, in my mind, to topics coming up that, you know, they don't, may not know a lot about, or, you know, just seeing how they think in the moment on the fly.
So you're talking about an interview, really, process, not a forum?
Well, it would be, it would be a forum in the sense that an interview process, you either ask the same questions of each applicant, which isn't fair, because then, you know, the applicant that goes first versus last, you know, the one that goes last has all the information. They have time to think in greater depth. And so that my surmise on the reason that the, the form of the forum evolved was to keep it fair, because they rotate who gets asked first and who gets asked last. So everybody is first in line, everybody's last in line at some point during it, and everybody gets the same question. And so it makes it fair, in that sense, in terms of responsiveness.
Why is that different from the interview?
So if, if it's an interview, you have, you have applicant number one comes in, you ask them a bunch of questions. And applicant number two is like, oh, gee, what questions are they asking? So you either have to ask different questions, in which case you're not getting consistent information, or you're giving the later applicants an advantage.
I see, okay.
You can mix that up. There are various ways to, to mix that up. You know, this, this is just getting so, I feel like this is just getting so into the weeds. I don't know what to say about it. I'll leave it to you all, because I'm, I'm going to vote no.
Fair enough.
All right.
I did want to just clarify, since that statement was made. An urgency ordinance requires a four-fifths vote of the council, so it would require a unanimous vote of this council.
Well, that solves it right there, doesn't it? Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't want to throw a, a spanner into the process. But I think if we're going to get, if we're going to dig deep into details, I'd rather see a subcommittee formed to work on, on the precise items and, and bring it back to us.
Do you have thoughts?
I think we can get it done now, and I think we need to, as, as a council. If we want to have a subcommittee to, you know, help produce the ordinance that we're going to see really soon, I could see that, and I'd be happy to be on that. But I don't think we need one. I think we can make some decisions now.
I think so.
Yeah, so as a proposal, I think essentially each applicant's statement, well, so I guess I hear sentiment that if there is a forum, that all applicants are included. In which case, then the nomination step isn't needed, and their, their statement to council would be their opening statement, which is the standard in the forum. And the standard is two-minute opens, opening statement, a minute to answer each question. You set the number of questions. I mean, usually it's time limited, but we could set the number of questions, and then a one-minute closing statement, and you're done. I mean, it's, it's a pretty standard format, in my experience, from group to group.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with it if we limit it to candidates who have at least one member of the council has nominated them.
Okay, I mean, that, that's my, that is my inclination as well. Is to, so to hybridize these, their openings, every applicant would make an opening statement, essentially, which would be their statement to the council. The council would then nominate, and then those who were nominated would go on to this, this question forum format. And then they would have the opportunity of a closing statement.
Would that happen on the same night?
I think, yeah.
Time crunch right now, so.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, it would all be, it would all be, yeah, it would all be on one night. I mean, the, the way the process is laid out now, whether there's a forum or not, the council is making the appointment the night that they hear from the applicants. Now, that's something else. We could decide, we don't want to do that, but I don't think we have the time latitude to not do that.
Just to check on that, this particular conversation isn't necessarily embedded within the urgency ordinance, correct? At least on your memo.
Yeah.
So that clarification would help us prepare the urgency ordinance.
Yeah.
You could probably figure, sort out some of those details when we're ready for a forum.
Yeah, okay, I like that. So I think if, if there's a decision that all applicants address the council, that, I think, should be in the ordinance. If it's followed by nomination, I think that should be in the ordinance. And then, I don't know, I mean, that, the ordinance could just say, you know, there will be a question and answer period and leave it, leave it at that.
That the, the council has discretion to
Yeah.
question the applicants after they have made their opening statements?
Well, after nomination.
After nomination.
After nomination, yeah.
Yeah, then it leaves it up to them whether to have it and how to design it, which is a headache in itself.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And the ordinance will come back, and we will have all thought about it more and can decide if that's how we like it.
So.
Yes?
Let me just clarify this in my own head. So regardless of how many applicants we have, we would listen to them, and then we each nominate one? So the forum ends up with four people, is that, am I doing the math right?
Yeah, well, in this case, it would be one. If there were two seats open, it would be six.
All right, I'm going to talk about this case.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so it would be, it would be four, which is.
Conceivably, it could be one. What if everybody nominated the same person? Then, then we're done.
Then we're done.
Or if there were two, or.
Well, if there's two, we're not done.
Right.
Yeah.
We still ask that one person a lot of questions.
That's like poor Sadiya. Yeah, I, I guess, yeah, okay, I understand that, okay.
Okay, okay. Then on to the.
I think, I think the word forum is what.
Is what's.
Because it's not, it's, you know, if we get down to two people, I'm not sure it really is a forum. Yeah, question and answer makes a little more sense.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a League of Voters guy, so I've moderated forums, so I think that's why I'm like, doing what humans do, and I'm looking where I've been.
And the, and the council would be the body asking the questions?
Yes.
We're not bringing it.
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Should we put in something about who moderates it? Because I always imagined it would be the mayor.
Yeah, I think the mayor moderates it. And I mean, in this case, the moderation is, it's mechanical, really. I mean, in an actual
You shouldn't have to do much.
Right, I mean, in an actual forum, like a League of Women Voters forum, the public submits questions, and they filter the questions. I don't, that's, well, we can talk about whether we want to have the public submit questions, but I don't think that's appropriate to have the mayor filtering the questions, because then that does introduce bias.
Especially if we're leaving it up to the council. If we're not defining how the forum works, I don't think we need to address public questions or anything, because that's up to the council when they decide to do that question and answer period or not.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So we're going to take one more item, and then we'll go back to public comment. So the next item is balloting, how to do the balloting. So I put out the process that was used in 2014, and a variety of other options. I don't know if anybody has thoughts on which option they prefer, or if they just want to discuss options.
I think probably option three.
Which is?
Which is repeated balloting.
Okay.
Which is kind of caucusing, essentially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Essentially.
I think some of the advisory bodies have put things in some kind of grid form. And can you kind of talk about how that works?
When
Like, social economic justice, when they were doing their work plan?
Yeah, when the advisory body, some of the advisory body, when they were ranking, when they had to, when they were directed to cut down their items to 15 items, they did some sort of table, and they ranked the work plan items. And there's some formula that's in the table, and the one with the most number is ranked number one.
Yeah.
In that order.
Yeah, so the city manager, actually, just sent that to me in a different context, so thankfully. Yeah, so the way that process worked was, like, yeah, like 20 items, and each member could rank 12. And then they took the inverse, essentially, of that. So number one ranking was worth 11 points, number two was worth 10, and then they added those up and used that to for their prioritization. I think that works for lists of items. I don't think that really works well for elections, essentially.
Yeah, I'd agree, especially if you have some, if you have that sort of system with a small group like this, or with any group, where you can essentially, you know, you have this many, that's very similar to a system where you have this many votes, and you can establish them however you want. So you can cast, you know, all four for one, or one for each, for example. And in that case, it's very easy for someone to be voted for by one or two council members and have a majority of the votes, if they just pile on their votes there. Which this seems kind of similar in that if you, you know, if there's sort of a point thing, and it's very easy for that to get kind of lopsided quite quickly.
Yeah.
Or we could just use the actual ballot.
Yeah, yeah.
Rank one, two, three, four, five.
Well, I'm inclined to just repeated balloting with, you just vote for one, because, I mean, again, that's what I found in parliamentary procedure after parliamentary procedure. I mean, I hadn't found any parliamentary procedures that did anything different. And so, again, that idea of the wisdom of a million minds that have tried all sorts of different things, I imagine, this is the one that seems to have stuck.
Well, and that's what ranking is trying to create. It's just you get discussion in between, and you can't do that with everybody in democracy, because it's really hard to get everyone in a room together to discuss and take multiple votes. So that's what we're caucusing, is what we're trying to create with ranked choice. So if we do this, we're essentially doing the perfect version of it that you can only do with, you know, four people, or a parliament of people.
People in a room. On the other hand, I think as the examples in Wikipedia, we don't want to have that of 78 rounds of balloting, like happened in Ipanema with Jefferson and Adams, or whatever it was. So that's why I suggest to have a time limit.
I mean, given that on this council, we really don't like to go later than 11, I think there is some inbuilt time period, and if we put one in, especially, I think we're pretty safe from that, and also because it's small.
Right. Although, I mean, I would suggest not a clock time, but a duration time, because, again, if we have a lot of applicants and we start the meeting, I mean, you might see how many applicants we have when we start the meeting at six, but we might not get through that until
Yeah, I'd agree.
Who knows when.
But we're only voting on four, probably.
Four, yeah.
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 I don't know, I have, and I think that in 2014, we kind of got stuck with two people who just, they kept voting, and it was the same two people, and the same two people, and the same two people. And honestly, I don't remember how they broke through that, but I think it would be really frustrating if you were the candidate, and all of a sudden, somebody said, okay, we can't do this anymore. Well, how do you, you know, well, wait, where's, how does that piece work? So
Was that a vote for no time limit?
Well, kinda.
No time limit!
But it is a thought of having the conversation, and, you know, saying, well, I like this person because, and then you go, oh, yeah, okay, I could
Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, I'm not saying
I'm only giving you one more time to vote, you know.
Yeah, I'm not saying 10 minutes. I'm saying, you know, an hour, two hours, you know, pick your number. I mean, I think it needs to, absolutely, the intent is to deliberate between each vote. I can say in 2014, it was interesting, because what happened was, there was supposed to be one applicant eliminated each round, and in the first round, there was a tie for two of the applicants. And they rebaloted, and it didn't break. And then the city manager said to the mayor, we agreed that there'd be a limit of three rounds of balloting, which wasn't in the written procedure. It was like, well, that's, we don't want, I absolutely don't want to have anything happen that's not in the written procedure. That's a pretty bad situation. So then they balloted a third time, and it was still tied. And then the city manager said to the mayor, we agreed that if there was a tie the third time, the mayor would break the tie. And it was like, that wasn't in the written procedure, so that provided the mayor an authority that wasn't in the written procedure that nobody knew until that moment. And I was like, no, we can't, we can't have that. And I don't think the mayor should be provided that power at that point, because that's not the intent of our charter.
Well, especially as the, even if we don't set a time limit, the built-in time limit for balloting is that if the council doesn't get it done, the mayor gets to do it, which I think is pretty good encouragement for everyone to get it done, because I don't think people want that to happen, really, people who aren't the mayor.
I will say, the mayor after 60 days.
The mayor after 60 days. Yes, I'm saying, I would love if you all decided to not do this all and let me do it when I'm mayor in 60 days, but I don't think that's going to happen, and nor do I think that's actually a good thing.
Very well, so
So then, how do you determine what the time is? I mean, and that's the question for us to figure out.
Right, I mean, you've got to decide ahead of time.
Yeah.
I mean, it's either unlimited or there's a time limit, but you've got to decide before the whole process starts, in order to be fair. I will offer that the, I read about 20 different charters of cities that were similar size across the state, similar size in the Bay Area, and they pretty much all had a motivating feature in them like this. There was even one that had the motivating feature that the voters of our state have applied to our state government, which is, if you don't get it done, you don't get paid. So there was only one that did that, which obviously might not be quite as motivating for this council.
That's in, I think, the city of Alameda, one we have.
Oh, really? Is that one in here?
I think that's not a bad idea for legislatures, but it doesn't seem like that much of a motivator for this council.
Well, that's, yeah.
We're not getting it paid after the end anyway.
Yeah, right, that's right, yeah, there's that too.
We keep turning the heat down, or turning the heat up, whichever way we want to go.
But, yeah, so some had, you know, if the council doesn't appoint for 60 days, it goes to special election. Some had, if the council doesn't appoint for 60 days, it goes to the mayor. Some had, you don't get paid, you know. So they all had some way to sort of motivate reaching a consensus.
But I think it's our goal to reach consensus at night, not just keep putting it off, so
Yes.
But you need some kind of tie-breaking procedure, and since it's going to go to the mayor after 60 days, it doesn't seem so bad to have the mayor break the tie if you have a tie that holds, to me.
I mean, that's obviously what's going to happen. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I was thinking along somewhat similar lines of saying, three, you have three hours to do the balloting after you've gotten to the step where you start balloting, and if you don't reach something, and you're in a tie at the end of that, then the mayor breaks the tie.
Three hours seems like a lot, but
Three hours?
I appreciate you putting a number out there. We got a number on the table.
I don't think we would take that long. I struggle to picture it, but it's, I think it's a reasonable amount of time, possibly.
I mean, I wonder about an hour, and then if it's still tied, it goes to a second meeting for another hour. You know, because the benefit of a week to think about things, or whatever, I mean, my brain does work at night when I'm asleep, and sometimes when I'm awake, and can come to a different perspective. So I think maybe with that, we could take public comment, unless you have another thought, and then we can go to public comment.
You know, I, three hours is fine. We have to finish it that night. I don't, we just don't have time to keep going, is, I think, part of the problem in this case.
Okay.
And I wonder if it should be a certain number of rounds, because if ideally, in between the rounds, or part of the rounds, we're talking about it, and we're coming to some consensus, I wonder if that makes more sense than three hours. You know, having, instead of a clock time, it's a rounds. And I don't, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's five. I mean, in three hours, it would seem to me, you might be able to do 20 or 30, and that seems kind of silly. So I would rather have it maybe five rounds. And then there's a bit of urgency, like, okay, we've done three, you know, I really need to think about this. Can I make this compromise? I don't know.
Okay. My initial thought was more than five, maybe 10?
Okay.
That's a lot, but it provides space. It's not, you know, how many rounds did it take the House to decide between Jefferson and Burr? 100 or more?
Didn't I end up at a duel somewhere? I don't think we want to go there.
That was a separate duel. I'd say 10.
Okay, 10.
Okay, so we have some proposal on the table? Okay to go to public comment?
Okay with me.
Okay.
Council, may I please get three minutes? My stuff is very organized.
I think that's fine, given the number of commenters that we have, which might be one or two.
Thank you.
Maybe three.
Well, work backwards for balloting.
Okay.
So since we're having four council members appoint one person, there's actually a room for a tie, right? So to overwhelm that tie, maybe we could have the public get to vote for one, so there would be a fifth vote, and that would actually come from the public, and that would encourage public participation, to show up here to City Hall, or to attend online, to actually come here and vote in person, and a majority vote would win. I mean, I know you have this whole process you're still trying to figure out, but I would just say, one vote, majority wins, end of story, seems kind of fair in a way. So please consider that. There's, if there is a tie, then maybe consider that the public does get to vote. And there was a question about nominating before answering the questions, if there was a forum. So I would just kind of throw it out there that maybe, I don't think there's going to be 15, but that would be great. Maybe we can just give it a chance this time, just to have all the candidates get to answer questions, and, here we go, here's my organization. So the council, you said the council could run the forum, or the mayor could run the forum. It could be here at City Hall. I know, Nathan, you said that government bodies might not want to be doing the forum. Here's some ideas, maybe the school district gets to do the forum. I know that's kind of far out there. But the questions could be from the public, and I know, Ms. McQuaid, you're kind of concerned that the questions come from the public, because it's kind of like what the public feels important. But also, we could have questions from the public, but also have their room to be the, have the candidate's statement. That way, the candidate gets to show what their ideas are, and what their platform is, and what's important to them. But at the same time, also get the public to be involved by asking questions. Maybe limit it to five questions. That way, there's only five questions, it's only going to be, you know, one minute for each candidate to answer. So I would say, yes, please have a forum. And, you know, if this, if we can't figure something out, then maybe we can have a special election. I know it's kind of far off, but just strictly go to the public and have the public vote. But so, and I was wondering, who did run the forum a few years back when Amber ran? There was a forum here at City Hall. I was just wondering who ran that forum. So, yes, please make questions available by the public, limit it to five, and please let the public get to vote if there's a tie.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Julie.
All right, yes, thank you. So my comments on the forum is, I also, I don't understand having the applicants address the council, and the council nominates people before there's a forum. I don't understand that. I don't understand why you wouldn't want to hear, have a discussion, and why, I don't, I think you're, the concern may be that there's going to be a lot of people, I think that's probably not true. So I would really like to see all the applicants get a chance. I'd like to see a forum, yes, a forum, and yes, there can be conversation before there's any kind of nomination, or I'm not even clear why there needs to be nomination, why can't you just vote? And I also think the public, I agree with Jeremiah, I think that the public should be involved, and should have a chance to ask the questions. I also have a question. I'm not really clear on this deliberation that's happening, where you're doing ballot after ballot, and then having conversations in between that you're describing. Is that happening in front of the candidates and the public? So that you're sitting there, talking amongst each other in public, while the candidates are sitting there in the audience, and one of you is saying, you know, I didn't think he expressed himself very well, and another one says, yeah, he doesn't have a lot of experience. I mean, is that the kind of thing that will be happening in front of the candidates? And then, and is the public invited to be part of that? Or will they be privy to it, or is this all done in closed session? I'm just not clear on, like, what this looks like. And then, finally, I just, I just wanted to say that I hope, I understand that you were trying to put up something, some sort of procedure into place, but I would really like to see you actually conclude all of this by saying that because the election was yesterday, and we had ranked choice voting, and we have somebody who ranked third, I just don't understand why not go with what the public chose. You know what they chose. And so I really encourage you to finish this up for the sake of whatever reason you're doing it, but to really, to really consider that. I think that Councilmember Nathan put it well, you know, that the public has spoken. This is a, it was democratically done, they voted, this is the outcome, live with it, you know, if you don't like it. I don't understand putting all these obstacles away. So I hope that this is just because you want to have a procedure, and it's not because you discounted that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. To my knowledge, my memory, the forums that have been held in the chambers here were held by the League of Women Voters, so they were given access to the room. Actually, yeah, sat up here in one of these forums with yourself and yourself, now that I remember, in 2018, way, way back in the pre-times. So, yeah, to frame what the commenters brought up, more, you know, more public involvement, and whether there needs to be nomination. In terms of the deliberation, I can answer that. I mean, this would be public. It's not a closed-session item, so the deliberations would be in public, with whoever wanted to be in attendance at that point, in attendance, and watching, and recorded for perpetuity, as long as digital with whoever wanted to be in attendance at that point in attendance and watching and recorded for perpetuity, as long as digital recordings last. So, yeah, I'm sympathetic to, do we really need nominations if we're going to do repeated rounds of balloting? Seemed like it was more important if we were going to use the 2014 process. And I think it's probably reasonable, there's not going to be 15 people apply or even 10 who go through and don't withdraw. So I'm, I am kind of inclined to just remove the nomination part and take gamble and see what happens. Just so that, so that the question and answer is to all the applicants, all the applicants make a statement, all the applicants answer the same questions.
What kind of brings it to, are we addressing this situation, or are we looking to make a policy indefinitely?
Right.
And I think there's two different answers. And that's where I think the nomination comes in. If we, if we're looking down the road, it may be more important. At this point, it may not matter.
Right. I mean, the population has grown by 4,000 people in the last 20 years, and with the development that's occurring, I mean, I presume there's some correlation between the size of the population and the number of applicants. I don't know why we should really get stuck on this anyway.
And that's not important tonight.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be okay with removing nomination, because then change the language of, then it's just, they make their statements, and then the council decides what they're to form, you know, what form to follow for their form.
Yeah, or question and answer.
Question and answer.
Get away from the forum.
Yeah, which I can see making repeated balloting more prone to ties, I can see making it less prone to ties.
Well, and I think what, what I read in parliamentary procedure is if you include more people, you include the option of a consensus candidate emerging.
Yeah.
You know, which you wouldn't get, you wouldn't get if you had a special election. But it is an appropriate outcome in a situation where there is a tie, that everybody kind of has to give up on their, their first preferred and go with the second preferred.
So if, say, we had six candidates and we didn't nominate, we did the question and answer. And we voted, and there were four, each one of us voted for a different person, so there were four people got one vote. In the next round, are those the only four that we're voting on?
No.
We keep, everybody stays in.
Everybody's in.
Everybody's in until we-
That's the way parliamentary procedure is written.
Everybody's in until that somebody gets three, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that way, somebody who didn't get any votes might end up being the consensus.
Yeah, which, which I think works. One question I don't think we have discussed, I don't want to move us on too soon, but it seems like we're general agreement.
I want to come back to public and public. I mean, maybe there's something we decided the next special meeting, how, if and how the public is involved in this. It might be too hard to figure out tonight, because there is that, if the public submits questions, then somebody filters the questions. I mean, it could be that the public submits questions, and each candidate, each council member chooses one from among those questions. And then it's no more biased than the council members choosing their own questions to start with.
Yeah, I think if we're leaving the process of a question and answer up to the council doing it, I don't think we need to find that in the ordinance of the public's.
Right, yeah, okay, so we'll push that off. I think it needs to be defined before that night.
Yes.
How it's going to go, okay?
Yeah, yeah. But we haven't, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, when this was done previously, it wasn't everyone, you know, saying, I vote for this person publicly. It was written on a piece of paper, right?
Right, and then paper went to the city clerk, who was the city manager at that time, and then she had a spreadsheet, she typed it up and it went up on the screen.
Right.
So it is a, it's, it's not a sequential vote, which is important. You know, everybody's writing simultaneously, which I think is key, but it is a public vote, in the sense that everybody gets to know how each council member voted.
Right. I just wanted to be super clear.
Yeah.
If we're following that, and also that that is still a public vote, it's not really a secret ballot, but it's just a different way of doing what we always do without having anyone influence each other.
It's a way to do a simultaneous vote.
Exactly.
But still have a public, yeah. Okay.
Can we go back to the idea of if we have, say, six candidates and we're doing 10 rounds? And maybe after the third round, two candidates have no votes, maybe at that point we take them out? Just, I don't know. I mean, just throw that out as a suggestion.
But, but then we're not doing the dark horse candidate kind of thing. We're not allowing that of, you know, this person didn't get any votes on the first couple ballots, but there's a deadlock between these two other candidates, and everyone can agree on that other person, though they just each like, you know, that person is everyone's second choice, it's just no one voted for them as the first choice.
Right.
So might it make more sense to just do a straight ranked choice?
Yeah, it doesn't work with, I, I, I've been through this, I've tried to figure out how to make ranked choice work with like five or four people, and it just doesn't work, because there's just too many ties.
And because also this allows discussion in between, this is ranked choice.
Yes, I think it's, it's, yeah, it's fair to say Robert's rule of, Rules of Order only recommends ranked choice when the body, the deliberative body cannot actually convene in person to deliberate when they have to vote by mail for whatever exigencies there are.
Speaking of someone who thinks about our election systems more than is healthy, what the version we're talking about is in many ways the perfect version that you can only do with a small amount of people. Everything else is trying to get at that when you have a much more complicated, large country.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like the town hall meeting or the town meetings, which it's hard to wrap my mind around as a Californian, but that I've read about in, in New England.
Right.
I've been to this.
You have?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. I'd love to talk about that sometime.
Don't remember much, but anyway, okay, moving on. Okay.
So then, I guess, and I don't, I don't know that this would be, probably this would not be in the ordinance. Could be left out of the ordinance. I mean, the ordinance could say, you know, a time or number of rounds will be set in advance. Or it could set those. I don't know which, but for ourselves, we need to set something, whether it's in the ordinance or not. If it's going to be, the ordinance could have a placeholder, and we could think about it and come back and talk about that. We could try to decide it tonight, tentatively, knowing we can change it.
I think 10 rounds and then mayor breaks tie seems a good thing to put in the ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, I will address the suggestion of public breaking the tie. I mean, I don't, I don't see any, any way to do that because it's too dependent on who shows up, who has the resources to show up. I mean, there's a reason we, we have elections the way we do, to try to make them as fair as possible. And if we have the public breaking a tie, then it's going to be, there's just so many, so many fried dimensions of that that I can think of that I don't.
Yeah, it just gets back again to the issue of, it's hard to get people to get involved in this process. If you do it in a way that's not part of a big push, it's, becomes a very difficult task to make that not a very small group of people who may not represent the true population of anything, especially if that's an event that, you know, only some people can come to because of, you know, now we have an online option, so maybe more people can come to it, but people don't have access to that.
Some people are working.
Some people are working, some people are taking care of family. There's just too many variables of, it's nigh impossible to make that fair.
This is, this is, this is crazy. This is a non-starter. I'm sorry.
Well, I think we're agreeing. And we're moving on.
All right, thank you.
So I think we've gone through, and I will try to recap what I understand here and see if we got it, if I understand and got it correctly. So on the application, there'll be 300, up to 300-word statement, two-page resume with some instructions of what could be included. City service, community service. And there'll be a two-week application period. The name of those who apply would be put on the city's website, on a webpage for the purpose. At the time, shortly after they applied, they would have the option of having an email address published if they wanted to. And then after the application period is closed, there would be a withdrawal period of some amount of time, which I don't think we closed on what that amount of time would be, and the applications would be published on same said page after they close the application period. And then the next step would be, the applicants would, in a, in a council meeting, would address the council. After they addressed the council, there would be a question and answer period. And at the close of that period, the council would go to balloting, which would be a written ballot. The results of how each council member votes would be made public, but it would be a written ballot handed to the city clerk. There would be, it would be one vote per council member, and there'd be 10 rounds of balloting. And if it is still tied after 10 rounds, the mayor would break the tie, which is sort of a recognition that it would fall to the mayor anyway after 60 days. Although there is a distinction there, because if it's the mayor who breaks the tie, the mayor after 60 days is a different mayor than the mayor at that meeting.
Well, if it's very near an election.
If it's what?
If it's, if it's very near an election time in which we are-
I'm just saying in this-
Or very near the change of years.
I'm saying in this instance, I want to be clear that that is the implication of that decision. I'm not pushing that. Yeah. Okay. Okay. I'm not sure I want that power, but okay. I just, I just realized, wait, that's me. Yes, Councilmember Nathan.
We could make it the vice mayor who is the tiebreaker. There's nothing to stop us from doing that. He would be the tiebreaker if it, if it went to 60 days, so that would be perfectly appropriate in this particular instance.
Right, but I, I'm in favor of writing something that is durable. And I, and I think this needs to be in the ordinance, and I think it needs to be durable beyond this, this instance.
I'd agree.
So.
This is an example where what Councilmember McQuaid said makes a lot of sense. I don't think we should be, I think we should do what's appropriate here and keep things very, very general for the ordinance.
The one thing we, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, I just meant for the long term, yeah.
The one thing we didn't, or were you done with your summary?
I, well, I think I was. Was I done with it? Did I get it all?
The only thing I think we didn't finalize is will the public be able to ask questions at the question and answer? And I don't think we came to a conclusion on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, because that's not in the ordinance that we're, we're leaving. That was a summary of all the things that we, this council, have generally endorsed if we go through this process. As I understand it, not all the things you just said would be in the ordinance.
Right, right.
Yes.
But I think if, if we're talking about what we're thinking about for this time, we need to address that.
Right, so we could, we could address it now, which is fine. We could discuss it now and make a decision at the next meeting. Since it wouldn't be in the ordinance, and we're going to have a special meeting to adopt the ordinance on urgency, we have another opportunity to discuss anything that isn't in the ordinance.
Okay. I just didn't want to lose it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and so in that sense, that given that it's here and now, there is value to that, as you say, because we're thinking about it and it's fresh. So my thought is that purely on the fly was that the, the public could submit questions, and each council member would have the opportunity to select from the questions that the public submits. I mean, I think we have to have a limited number of questions. I would suggest that the, again, following forums, as are usually constructed, there's, each council member comes in with a couple of prepared questions. And then the public submits questions, and each council member selects from among those. Yes?
Just a process suggestion of designing this form, this hypothetical form, is going to be really hard.
Okay.
So if we don't have to do that, then we shouldn't.
Okay.
And we might not have to do that if we want to do the other option here that's been presented by Councilmember Nathan. So my suggestion is we discuss that first.
Okay.
With the idea of discussing whether we want to include that in the ordinance to cover, which would negate us having to go through a lot of this process if we included it and passed it.
Right. Well, I think, I mean, my position is the ordinance should include that there will be a question and answer following statement. Not anything more detailed than that, but-
Yes, that's what I'm saying, but I'm saying, if we have, if we have that, we don't need to make a decision of how does the public involve themselves.
Tonight?
Yes.
Because we might have this other option. Okay, all right.
Saying, let's discuss, now that we've made the broad strokes of everything including the ordinance, let's talk about the other thing that we can include in the ordinance.
Well, let me check with staff, since that was a lot.
I have everything you, you've expressed for the urgency ordinance, understanding that there is a reference to the application, but not the specifics of the application, so we're good.
Okay.
Exactly to Vice Mayor Teedman's point, I think I'm, I'm basically waiting on your decision with regard to what Councilmember Nathan raised
Okay.
to complete this ordinance.
Right, right on, okay. So yeah, let's take up that option of the City of Alameda approach, which is that within some timeframe after, after an election, if there's a vacancy, it's the next candidate who got the next most votes. Maybe with some threshold for how much support they have to get. Yes?
So we should have a threshold, but a part of it, of us using ranked choice now, is that anyone will pass the threshold essentially. Unless there's a ton of people, say, in this election, the next person not elected must have essentially whatever threshold we'd say it is, unless that threshold is above the election threshold essentially.
Well, no, I mean, you, you can, so with five candidates running, two of them could have gotten elected in the first round, each with 45% of the vote. So I'm not saying that's likely, but it is possible for the next placing candidate to have far below what the threshold of election would be.
That's true. Okay, then maybe what I'm saying is it's very probable.
It's very probable.
That someone is going to have, you know, we could set the threshold at double, a double what this is, at 20%.
Right.
Whereas the next up is probably going to have that.
Yes.
No matter what, which is, I think is okay, what I'm saying, what my point here was, because the point of ranked choice is showing that this person is preferred by the voters, by putting in a threshold, though, we are still saying, you know, if people left a bunch of their votes blanked, because there was, you know, one candidate that no one preferred, then, then we are saying that that's not
Right.
up to the threshold that we're setting.
Okay.
Well, I've lost you a little bit.
No, 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 I understand what you're saying. I'll come back to that, because there's, there's an issue with that. Anyway, I just realized looking at the results of this election. I'm Councilmember Nathan.
Yeah, could the threshold be based on first-choice votes? That you have to, that a certain percentage of the electorate has to, you have to be the first choice of at least whatever percent it may be?
Yes.
I really don't like that, to be honest, because then that gets away from the point of having the ranked choice voting, of we're showing that people, that this is a preferred candidate of people. And by that logic, it, that especially means that someone might not have a lot of first-choice votes if, say, you know, imagine two people are running together, and they are, you know, everyone who prefers them votes for one of them unless the other is their second choice. The people who vote for them could represent a huge portion of the population, who all prefer those two candidates over anyone else. It's just that they all rank the same person of those two as their first choice. And so if you do it by first round, then you're ignoring that, well, a lot of people, when you tabulate and when you take the overvotes and do the ranking, would prefer the other person over any of the other people.
Yeah, when I think about it, I think that option works, I mean, I think that works well with plurality at large, because people can vote for multiplicity of candidates. Another scenario that I don't think will work very well is, let's say we set the threshold to 20%. Well, you could get a candidate who got 20% support in the first round, but that's all the support they're ever going to get, you know, which 20% might make them potentially in a two-seat race, kind of an extreme candidate. So I think by going with the next placing candidate that comes out of the ranked choice algorithm, you're getting more of a- algorithm, you're getting more of a consensus candidate, not a full consensus candidate, but more of a consensus candidate.
I don't have.
Any thoughts?
I don't have any thoughts at this point. Keep talking.
Into the weeds at this point.
I can do that.
I've noticed.
Yeah, so if there's, if there's appetite for that, then it's, I'm, I'm, I didn't come into the meeting with being in support of that option, but hearing others talk about it, I'm, I'm more open to it than I was coming in. But yeah, then it would be a question of threshold, but then there's this issue that, you know, if you go down to, the count goes down to only one, one candidate more than the number of seats, then they're, they're almost certainly going to make the threshold. And at that point, it's, it's kind of, really has a lot to do with the dynamics of the candidates, how the support is spread, how many candidates there are, and there's a lot of sort of arbitrary, really arbitrary factors there.
You know, I think, I'm not opposed to this idea, and I'm certainly willing to keep talking about it, but I'm wondering if this should be a charter change rather than part of what we're doing here, and to sort of do our norm, whatever our normal process is for this go-round, and think about putting this as a charter amendment in 2024.
I actually like that a lot, because it had occurred to me, I don't think taking this approach is in the spirit, at least, of the way the charter is currently laid out in terms of the council makes the appointment.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we, we'd sort of be cluding, if, if we adopted something like this in ordinance, we couldn't make it binding.
Right.
Because the council makes the appointment. So it would be, it would be advisory to the council at this point, and the council would have to decide whether or not to follow that advice.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Councilmember Rason?
The alternative would be to, that this could be a factor in the, in the council's decision. Here is the, the scenario that troubles me. Suppose that the three candidates who are not seated coming out of the election are the three candidates. Do we really want to choose among them when the electorate has already weighed in on that?
Well, I think.
If I'm choosing who I think is the best person, I might very well choose a different person than the person who came in third. And I would be very uncomfortable with that. I, I think that the, the will of the voters should be a, not only a legitimate consideration, but to me, it would be a very strong consideration. And I just want to be sure that that's part of the picture.
I think, I think, I, I hear what you're saying, and I think, for me personally, that's important, but I'm not sure that we should be basing this on, basically on people. And, and that kind of concerns me, that, that kind of becomes about people. And I think we want to keep it as generic as we, as we can, and not be thinking of particular people in particular order.
This reminds me of a, when I was on the Charter Review Committee, and we were deliberating on going from appointed to, I mean, elected to appointed city attorney, and one of the members who was really, really for appointed city attorney said, "Oh, but I don't want it to start now, because I don't want this council to appoint the attorney." And I was like, "That is not okay. This has to be durable. You have to be, this has to be the better solution across all scenarios, not always a great solution, and maybe worse than election in some situations, but overall, it's got to be better." And they backed down, and they were like, "Yeah, you're right, okay." So.
And I think that's kind of what I'm feeling here, that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I like the idea of having Charter Review, perhaps the ad hoc committee they'll be, to look at this.
Yeah.
But then, when we're making a decision, are we supposed to choose the person we think is the best candidate, or are we supposed to choose the person who we think best reflects the will of the electorate? Who is the most, who the, the most appro, who would be most likely to be selected?
Yeah.
Especially since we just had an election, you know, who the, the voters prefer.
So the vice mayor was going to speak next, maybe he'll address, provide an answer, I don't know if that was what he was gonna?
Maybe, let's find out. I was just gonna first say that the, the point of not me, you know, people was what I tried to bring up earlier, and I think is important here. And to say, I think there is a very strong argument for having this in our ordinance that's not about any people, that's about, we are in a unlikely and special situation in which we have just had an election, we had more candidates than we needed to seat. I guess by definition, we had an election, so we had more candidates than we needed to see, otherwise, there wouldn't be an election. And so we have, you know, we, we have a way to bypass all the difficulties that we've talked about academically of having special elections. And there's a, there's a argument that's not about any of the people involved, that's, there's a way to try and translate the will of the voters into action, which I think is, is a pretty good argument, and why I could be quite happy with having something like this in our ordinance. It would be advisory at this point, as it's not in the charter, but I think if we decide to put it in there, unless we all decided to rebel against it when it comes up to it, then I think it could make sense. I mean, it's, it would be advisory in the same way that the way we appoint the mayor is right now, you know? We could do it a different way, it's not by the charter, but it's our policy to do it this way, and we have voted on that and said, yes, it is, and we can later put it in by charter if we needed to. I'm trying to think if I addressed the thing where, oh, you know, how we're supposed to vote. I came into this thinking that of, that was always going to be a part of everyone's decision-making if people who did not get elected but ran applied. I think, of course, everyone here would consider that, you know, it's hard, it would be impossible to ignore, this person got some votes from the people. I don't think anyone here would be thinking of ignoring that. I, I don't think, I don't think there's a way for us to say via charter or ordinance, this is the metric which you must make your decision based on, and it must be, you know, who you think is best, or it must be who the voters chose, because we can't, I don't know, think there's a way to dictate how anyone on council makes a decision. It's their judgment, as I, as I said earlier. What we'd be doing here is defining, when we're in the special situation, we have another option that is not everyone's judgment, that is this other thing, that is the will of the voters. And there's, as I said, I think there's an argument for that.
I would offer that if it's six months after an election, having a vacancy is a special situation, but that would be, that, that situation would occur one quarter of the time that there's a vacancy, so. Whether you think that's special.
If we implemented this, the question is, yeah, what, what's the, what's the, how much must they get, and how long is the vacancy?
Right.
And I don't know if either of these numbers is right for us, but they might be.
Yeah, and I'm worried about not leaving latitude, because oftentimes, frequently, and maybe it won't happen so much, because we've changed our election method, although the data doesn't necessarily show that's likely, oftentimes, there's only one candidate more than, than there are seats. And so, and again, for the reasons you described with ranked choice, it's, unless people know, and you know, I'm not clear on how many people know this, unless they know not to mark that candidate, you could get somebody coming in third that really would not be good for the city.
Which, yeah, which I was just thinking about, I'm, I'm hopeful that in that case, if that, you know, odd person out is really not preferred by a lot of the city, then as we do more ranked choice elections, people will know, I don't have to rank anyone who I don't want to see elected, or nor should I if I really don't want to see them elected. And so if we were in that situation, I would, I would hope, and I would think that, again, as we do more of these elections, that people would say, "Well, I'm, I'm okay with these two, but, you know, there is not a significant portion of the population, there's not 20% or whatever, who have ranked all the way down, because if there's not, you know, if 80% of the population really doesn't want that person, 80% of the population isn't going to put them as an option even third."
Yeah. We'll certainly put, we'll certainly put the onus on education, voter education.
The onus is always on voter education.
But I mean, that specific aspect. Councilmember Rason?
Yeah, well, I'm really just echoing that, I think that that should be part of our education of the voters, that if you think a person is not, would not be good for the city, that you shouldn't rank them.
Yeah. Well, so then the question is, given the charter is what it is, so there's, there's no way to mandate on ourselves this situation. I mean, we, we can put it in the ordinance, and by doing that, we all agree, this is the way we want to head. Do we want to put it in the ordinance, even though it's essentially advisory?
What does that mean? It's essentially, I'm sorry, Aaron.
Yeah.
It's essentially advisory, what does that mean?
I mean, it's advisory, because the way the charter is written, the council, the council appoints. We can't have a, there's no, there's no, unless the city attorney says otherwise, there's no way we can adopt a mechanism that bypasses the council taking an action to appoint.
So are you saying?
Yeah.
I was just going to say, the council would appoint following this policy if you adopted it.
Right, yeah.
So we could adopt this policy, okay.
Right, so it would be a policy, but it wouldn't be a law, essentially.
Right. Well, you did.
Would it?
Yes, but a future council could obviously change it, or you could adopt an urgency ordinance and change it.
Change it, okay. So if we included it in the ordinance, right, then it would be, it would be law, it would be binding law. Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask the city attorney.
Okay.
If, if there's anything in the charter that precludes us, because it, it doesn't say how we have to appoint them, right?
Right.
So this would essentially be us putting in law how we appoint them.
Yeah, in these conditions.
It's the procedure, you'd be putting in the procedure, and this is the procedure that you want to follow, should it be in close in time of an election.
It would be like the vice president counting electoral vote, was supposed to be.
Yeah, but it would be a more binding version than what we did for how we elect mayor.
Yeah, yeah, oh, no, right.
This would be ordinance, it wouldn't be as binding as put in the charter, but everything government does is just a scale of how binding is it and how hard.
Right, but I mean, that analogy, it's like the Electoral Count Act, the vice mayor's ceremony, the vice president's ceremonial, this is what they have to do, and it's done.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Wasn't so ceremonial in January.
Well.
Should be.
Yes.
So, so with that in mind, I'd, I'd be happy to have this in the ordinance.
Okay, all right.
I'd, I'd still rather wait and have it as a charter amendment.
Okay. That means it comes down to me, doesn't it? Yeah, I might have to, I'm gonna have to take the, take the time that is available to think about it, which means it should be in the draft.
I was gonna say.
It could be in the draft as a module.
Maybe we put it in the draft with some, with whatever numbers we decide.
Right.
Whether they be these or not, and then.
And then I decide.
We vote, which.
Yeah.
We all need to agree on.
Right. That's right, we all, that's right, we do all have to, that's right, we have to all agree, so it's not down to me. Okay, well, so with that, yeah, you, you have a, you have veto power, essentially. That would get me off the hook from deciding.
So, but we're not deciding tonight, right? We're putting it in the ordinance for now, and we can.
Well, I mean, you could say tonight, "I am not going to support this, and there's no point in doing any more work on it." If you're ready, I'm, I'm doing my job as mayor, I'm like.
You certainly.
Blaying it out.
No, you are, you're, you're fine. You know, I, in, I don't know. Part of me is like you, I mean, we just looked at this tonight, I'm like, I didn't think about this a little bit.
Uh-huh.
I think I would be willing to say, "Let's put it in the draft ordinance with everything else."
Okay.
And then next week, we can, as we're voting on the ordinance, we can.
Decide.
Pull it out or leave it in or whatever.
Okay, well, so then in that case.
Does that, does that make sense over, at your end?
So in that case, then it's worth spending some time to figure out numbers, unless you want to punt that, but I would guess we don't punt that. So the numbers are, that I see are, how long after an election would this obtain, and what's the threshold? And the threshold, because we have two-seat and three-seat elections, would be a different threshold, depending on whether it's a two-seat or a three-seat election, or could be.
It could be, I don't know if it needs to be, because if it's sufficiently high, it should hit both of those without, because also, the, the threshold between those elections is not hugely different enough that I think we need to define different ones.
Well, if you think of it as the leftover, so if the threshold's 20, 20%, there's between 20% and 25%, it's 5%, between 20% and 33 and a third is more than twice, almost three times that. So I think in that sense, it is pretty different.
Just can't be easy.
Well, I mean, we could, but we could make it simple and say, make it two-thirds of the threshold. I mean, we could tie it to the threshold, and then, you know, two-thirds, three-fifths, whatever, pick a number, three-quarters.
Yeah, I could see that working.
Okay.
So what?
What number, though?
Yeah, what number?
What would, just, what would two-thirds and what would three-quarters be of each of the numbers?
Well, so two-thirds would be of, the two-seat threshold would be, you know, 22% and 16% plus of the 25% threshold. Then it would be three-quarters. It's arbitrary, whatever it is, it can be arbitrary.
Yeah, it's all arbitrary, but it's trying to find that right number value.
Yeah, so if it's three-quarters, that's like 18, so that's, you know, close to 20, a little bit under 20.
Seven, three-quarters?
Okay, all right.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm not sold on it at all, so.
Also, it could change when we have the language.
Yeah, okay.
That's 20% of the threshold, right?
No, it would be three-quarters of the threshold of election.
Right, 20%.
Which is three-quarters of 25% or three-quarters of a third, depending whether it's a two-seat or a three-seat election. But we don't have to specify that, because we're just tying it to the, the threshold.
So what's the sentence?
So the sentence is, the, so essentially, following this, it would be, receive votes from at least, from a total number of voters equal to at least three-quarters of the threshold of election. Of course, this is presuming, we have to keep using ranked choice, but that's a whole other, that's a whole other thing. Yeah. And then, so then the other decision is time, time duration after a special election, I mean, after a regular election. I mean, if we're doing this, I'd be inclined to make it, you know, split the difference and make it a year.
I wouldn't make it that long.
Okay.
But it says, on this one, it's six months, occurring within six months of any election. Is that on either side of the election?
Well, no, because you don't have, you don't have the results ahead of time.
So it's.
Arrow of time, unfortunately.
Election that's taken place.
Right, it's, you have another phrase in there.
Yeah, right, right. Six months after the, within six months after the election.
Right, six months after, yeah.
And is it after, I mean, it has to be after certification, yes.
Though, you could have a situation, like in the situation we're in, if the resignation had taken effect immediately, we would still not have been, had time to put the seat up for election. So sometime before the election actually does make sense.
Well, yeah, so, taking the scenario we happen to find ourselves in, if the resignation occurs less than 60 days before the certification of an election, then you could say it's going to go by the election result, but then if nobody know, nobody qualifies based on the election result, then you're stuck with too short a time to. then you're stuck with too short a time to make the appointment. So maybe it's, if the vacancy occurs 45 days ahead of certification, so you've got at least two weeks to, to run the process.
What, what's the, what's the timeframe? Because we've got next feasible election. Because, because I'm, I'm thinking about the case of we have a resignation six months before an election. That seems a long time to leave it vacant, and also, that may be a feasible amount of time to then put that seat in the election. What's the time?
Well, it's our, our charter already handles that, that scenario. So it's, I mean, basically, if there's a, if there's a vacancy after the close of nomination period, then it's not feasible.
Right, that's, that's essentially what I'm talking about.
Right.
I'm saying, the, the, the before-election countdown basically starts when that happens.
Right, so you're saying what happens in the two months before the close of nomination period? I think what happens in 2014, the council appoints somebody.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not asking what, I'm saying the, the timeframe is only effective in, in that space after a, the election has closed for new nominations.
All right, okay, now I'm, I'm confused. I think this only applies either from the time period of the end of the election, which we colloquially call Election Day. It's not Election Day anymore. Or from when the election is certified. It doesn't apply beforehand. It could apply, I mean, what I was getting at is, if there's a vacancy that occurs two weeks before Election Day, then maybe it could still apply. But you have no idea if somebody's gonna make it to that threshold. And you could run out the clock by waiting for the, the election to be certified. So I would say, I would, I would propose to keep it simple, it's.
See, this is why Charter review should study.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we're trying to say similar things, we're just not, talking at cross purposes and not expressing it amazingly, or at least I'm not. What, what I'm saying, so, the, if someone resigns in the period after the, it becomes not feasible to put their seat up in the next election, then they're within two months of the election, correct?
Uh, well, no, it's, I mean, so.
Three, two, three.
Yeah, three, yeah, three, yeah.
Okay, then we wouldn't, then, but, and the issue there is that then we hit the 60-day mark.
Right, I mean, so, which is hard, so.
But I think the intent is it's after the election. I think that's the intent, so how to get the language to reflect that.
Right, I guess I got tripped up on, you know, if, if there's a vacancy a week before the election, then are we gonna say, oh, well, then the council's gonna appoint, and we're not gonna use this process?
Yeah, I think we should avoid that.
Yeah, so where, where's the, so I think we can, what I would suggest, given how long we've been at it and the time, is that we have a placeholder in the, in the ordinance. And we go away and we think about this, and we come back more with more cogent thoughts. Councilmember Nathan.
No, I was just putting my thumb up. I think that's the thing to do. And I know that some folks in Rancho Palos Verdes was, were looking at this as well. They might have some, we might be able to, to take a look at their work.
Might be able to crib some work.
I think, do you have something to say? Okay, sorry.
We're obviously desperately looking like.
Did you say something?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the, the other, well, we should, we should do that, but we can also consider the option of, we mentioned earlier in the context of kicking this down the road, having an ad hoc committee do it. We could also, if we wanted to, you know, I, I trust staff completely to put what we've said up here, in here, but we're getting confused about it. And so if we wanted to, we could say, you know, before this comes back to us, these people should look at it and make sure it's doing what we want, or think about this language that we're getting tripped up on.
Always look at the draft.
Yeah.
Although, I mean, our next meeting is so soon, I don't know that it's gonna be time for.
Yeah, it's very soon, if we want to do that, so it may be.
Right, so I don't know if that's.
I'm throwing it out as, as an option, if we wanted to.
I think that would be kind of best practice if we had time, but I don't know if there's time for that iteration. I mean, I certainly, well, actually, yeah, actually, as mayor, I don't, I don't see the reports until everybody sees the reports. So, yeah, I guess that would be a question for staff. Do you, in drafting this ordinance, do you want to have a council member or two council members look at it before it sort of goes, goes into that, into that meeting, to make sure that we're not, try to minimize wordsmithing in the meeting? We probably don't have time, but, yeah, okay.
Friday's a holiday, and we, we need to post by Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I was wondering if, if it said vacancies occurring within 60 days of any elections? Because we still have to, we have to, otherwise the mayor fills the vacancy anyways.
Right.
In that 60-day period? Would that address the issue?
Oh, yeah, well, I always see what you're saying, right? Because we still have the 60 days. Yeah, so in this case, we might want to make it 30 days. I mean, because if you, if you leave it 60 days, then you run out the clock, you know, and there's no time for.
Something less than 60 days.
Right, right, so, yeah, but we need the election results to be certified. So I would say, a vacancy that occurs between Election Day and certification will go to, go to the runner-up.
Well, do you want it to qualify, potentially qualify for the current situation? Because the vacancy occurred previous to the election.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I, I, if we're gonna do that, then the wordsmithing would be that vacancy that occurs 60 days before certification of election or six months after an election.
Rather, what I think the point is, six months can't obtain because the charter provides the mayor authority to make the appointment.
The six months isn't defining a, a limit for making that appointment based on the election, that's saying, any election, any vacancy that occurs within that six-month period.
Yeah, I guess it could be binding on the mayor to make that appointment. Yeah, because it would fall to the mayor at that point, but there's no, they could bind the mayor.
No, I, I don't think that's what Erin's saying.
Okay.
It's not that the, the vacancy comes within six months, not the appointment.
Oh, right, I see, okay, okay.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, all right, okay.
So, so at any point in the six months after an election, someone resigns, you start a 60-day clock, but you still use those election results. Whereas if the vacancy occurs at any point 60 days before the certification of election, you use this process because you can then use the, the election as the metric. If it occurs 61 days before the certification of election, you're in a situation where you're in a, where that sucks. But you can then not use the election, because then the clock will run out.
But if it occurs 59 days before the election, and then the results are certified, and nobody meets the threshold, then the mayor makes the appointment.
Yes. So are you saying then we could, should define another thing that if no one meets it, in that case, then it goes to the normal process?
Well, that's why, I mean, it would, it would fall to the charter then, which the charter says 60 days after vacancy, the mayor makes the appointment, or has the authority to make the appointment.
But there should be, there should be an intermediary step, so it doesn't.
Right, so I'm saying.
It's not either this or the mayor. There's the process that we've worked on tonight.
Right, but I'm saying if, if, if it's 60 days before certification, if that's the amount we pick, then by the time certification comes, the clocks run out, and it goes to the mayor if nobody meets threshold, if nobody meets three quarters.
So if we want an alternative to just defaulting the mayor if no one meets the threshold.
It has to be 45 days or something.
It has to be 45, okay, then yes, 45 days.
Okay, okay, all right, 45 days, going once, going twice. It's 45, yeah, 45 days before certification. If the vacancy occurs within 45 days before certification of an election.
But there's more to it than that, because there's also the period from the election, and what they have here is the six months after.
Right, so if they, that's right, so if the vacancy occurs in the period from 45 days before certification to six months after certification.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Just think, as painful as this is for us, it's good for us to define it so that people don't have to in the future if this happens again.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah. All right, I think, I think that's it.
Yeah, I think we got there.
Okay.
If, do you, does staff have everything they need from us?
Okay.
Finding questions. Mayor, I'll just connect with you, especially on that last detail.
Okay, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Are we bringing back an urgency ordinance with the four votes requirements?
Yeah, yeah, with the, yeah, right, yep, yeah.
Do we need that as more official direction? Is that what you're telling us?
We've, I was just debating, you know, if, if the, if there aren't four votes, the other alternative is introducing a regular ordinance, and then on the, on the 15th, and then on the 21st, adopting it.
But isn't there a 30-day between two readings thing, so?
So the 30 days, it wouldn't go into effect until 30 days thereafter. It would still be before the 60-day.
Oh, I see.
Period, but it wouldn't technically be in effect.
So it's not 30 days between readings, it's 30 days after second reading?
Five days between readings, which we would have enough time.
Okay.
And then it goes into effect 30 days after adoption.
Okay, so can it come to, at the next meeting, can it come to the council as either an urgency or regular ordinance? I mean.
We just have to prepare two in a shorter time. That's why I was trying to.
Is there, I mean, are they basically the same? And one just says urgency, and one says first reading or something like that? I mean, the language should be the same, or would it not be the same?
The, there'd be, we'd have to remove findings. I mean, it can, it can be done, it's just, it's just we're under a crunch of time.
Yeah, okay. Well, so I think that comes down to keeping the option open for a vote of three to include this provision we've just been discussing or not.
By the time, if we did a regular ordinance, by the time it came into effect, how close would we be to the 60-day cutoff, is the question, of is it worth it?
Right, right.
I'm worried about that because of the administration. And you have a couple of really major items on your November 21st agenda already, which will consume the same administration, just for practical purposes. I don't want to make a mistake, assuming that we have general consensus that an urgency ordinance will avail approval.
Yeah, and if I, if I step back, I think in the situation we're in, I think it really needs to be consensus, full consensus. I think anything less than that is risks making this, this particular moment more fraught than it needs to be, potentially, I don't know. So I'd be in favor of urgency or bust. Yeah, well, it is, it is an urgency. Yeah.
I, I, I'm comfortable if we can find language that makes it at, at least part of our consideration to consider the, the vote, the vote.
Okay. All right.
Sounds good.
Okay, I think, I think we're there then. And it being a special meeting, there, I think, means we're now adjourned.
And just to confirm, then, your, your next meeting will be the 15th at 5 o'clock.
Okay, good detail.
Does that work for everybody?
Is that okay with all of you? There was a schedule conflict.
Yeah, I hadn't caught that.
I would say on the schedule conflict, so I'll make it work if it doesn't work for you guys.
Okay, actually, I did have it in my calendar, amazing.